This is the April eighth, twenty twenty five, school committee meeting located here at the PDC at the high school. My name is Anthony Tenerella. I officially call this meeting to order. I will remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded, and we will start with the introductions.
Evan Cody.
Eric Boerschman.
Becky Stanton.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Daniela Thanus.
Ryan McMahon.
Stacy Guido.
Rob Mullen.
Hi, Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Thank you, everyone. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, school committee EM policy subcommittee minutes.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, ad carry, seven zero zero. Citizens' time. We have a lot of citizens tonight. But none of them want to speak. Correspondents?
At this time, Mr. Chair.
Personnel, a few of those.
Yes, I'll do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have a lot of personnel notifications tonight. We have a notification, new hires for the FY twenty six school year. We have Tessa Buto, she'll be a new school psychologist, grade six or twelve. We have Allison Cambridge, she'll be a school nurse, primarily working on this campus here, replacing Deb Donohue in high school. Angela Greenwood will be a TES library assistant at the elementary school. And Jaclyn Tenerella will be a BCBA at the elementary school as well. I do want to go on record to say that, given the last name in front of the chair here, Ms. Tenerella did go through an interview process with the TES administration as well as unit A members, and was unanimous recommendation from Mrs. Kavanaugh and Mrs. Loenzig to myself, and I did the hiring for Mrs. Tenerella, so that there is no conflict of interest here. So those are our personnel notifications. In terms of resignations, Hannah Belcher, TMS teacher for three years. Shannon Clark, TES paraprofessional for six years. Dan Costigan, Tingsboro High School history teacher for three years. Laura Francis, Tingsboro Middle School, high school chorus teacher for three years. And Kathleen Valdina, TES phys ed teacher for one year. So those are the resignations. We also have a notification from Ms. Zock from the elementary school who has given us a notification of intent to retire at the end of the school year. Ms. Zock has been in that position for over fifteen years, so thank you, Ms. Zock, for your time, commitment, and dedication to the students and community of Tingsboro. And that's all we have for personnel, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. Share the success. Evan.
At TMS, eighth grade students finished their ELA MCAS today, and they will head to DC next Monday. Sixth and seventh grade students will take the ELA MCAS this Thursday and Friday. To adjust, congratulations to the March Tiger Pride Award recipients. Twenty-one students received the award by being nominated by staff for displaying tremendous character in accordance with THS's core values. Congratulations to the April Students of the Month, Arthina Bulas, Alexa Drew, Anna Pulius, and Noah Souza. Grace Mountie and Cameron Times recently represented THS for student government day at the Massachusetts State House. Spring sports are underway. Good luck to our spring teams. Theater continues to prepare for the performance of Six the Musical, which will take place later this spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Mr. Share, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to take item nine A out of order.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, ad carry, seven zero zero? Thank you. Of course, nine A is the Tingsboro Elementary School presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Ms. Kavanaugh here with a outstanding crew of students from TES. They're going to talk to us about the wind block and some special subject offerings, I understand, so, Ms. Kavanaugh.
So thank you for having us here this evening. You may recall, we were here earlier in the fall to give you an update on how the school year has gone. This group of student leaders, which was selected by their classroom teachers, has worked very hard over the last several weeks to see the progress and confidence in their speaking skills has been great to see. They have a chock full of presentation for you this evening with a lot of important updates. So I look forward to hearing from them, and I hope they're happy to answer any questions you have at the end.
Hello, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Lilian Duchesne, and I am in Mrs. Rochelle's class. We are all fifth graders, and we were chosen by our teachers to share what is happening in TES. We have been working together for the last couple of weeks on this presentation for you, and we hope you enjoy it.
My name is Blessing Akavla, and I am in Mrs. Vera's class. In this presentation, we'll discuss special subjects, our wind blocks, the five to six transition activities, and upcoming events at TES. Recently, the student council ran a food drive for the Saint Francis DePaul Society. They made it into a competition to see which grade would bring in the most non-perishable food items. The competition lasted three weeks, and TES collected over one thousand items to donate. Fourth grade brought in the most items and earned extra recess.
My name is Gavin Tien, and I am in Mrs. Vera's class. We watched some of the past TES school committee presentations and decided to try something different. As fifth graders, we record a morning news segment each day, and we thought it would be fun to try that for part of our presentation. Please enjoy this new segment featuring our special subject classes.
Welcome to TES Classroom News. I'm Gavin.
And I'm Jeff. Today, we're taking you live to Mrs. Morocco's science and tech class, where fourth grade students are in the middle of their thrilling roller coaster challenge project-based activity. That's right, Jeff. Behind us, you can see the students hard-out working using their engineering design process. Their designing and testing prototypes are roller coasters that need to accomplish something quite impressive.
Hello, music lovers. I'm Naylin.
And I'm Alicia. Welcome to the TES art subject. Today, we're live in Mrs. Gothier's second-grade music classroom, where students are diving into the magical world of the orchestra.
That's right, Alicia. Over the past few weeks, these young resistance haven't been exploring the options for instrument families. Strings, woodwinds, percussion, and brass. But today's focus is about bringing it all together through hands-on and interactive activities.
Hello, art enthusiasts. I'm Zoe.
And I'm Blessing. Welcome to TES Art News, where creativity takes center stick. Today, we're recording live from Mrs. Anderson's art classroom, where first-class students are at hard work, watercolor painting, drilling.
That's right, Blessing. This activity is inspired by my lover, the famous French impressionist painter Claude Monet. The students are channeling their inner artists, bringing Monet's serene, watergarding vibes to life.
Hey, there, sports fans. I'm Daniela.
And I'm Lilian. Welcome to TES Spotlight. We're here in the gym where Mrs. Valdina and the third graders are playing a craft favorite.
That's right, Lilian. This high-oriented game is part of PE class, and let me tell you, it's got everyone on their toes. The objective is simple: steal a gold coin, well, actually, tennis ball, from a pot of gold without being tagged by anyone.
I'm Naylin.
And I'm Alicia. Welcome to TES Science News, where curiosity and creativity collide. Today, we're live from Mrs. Kramer's fifth-grade science classroom, where students are wrapping up their study of physical science with their hand-on lab investigation.
That's right, Alicia. Today's experiment is all about understanding potential and kinetic energy. The students are building cotton ball launches from everything materials to demonstrate these important concepts. Well, that's all for today's science update. Let's turn it back over to today's school committee presenters.
We hope you enjoyed that news broadcast. My name is Zoe Perez, and I'm in Mr. Stewart's class. The schedule changed in our classes to include two wind blocks.
No one said so, Lisa. I have to go past this. Thank you. Please continue.
Link's here for what I need. We reached out to Miss Goulet and asked her how fourth grade uses these two blocks. She told us if you walk by the classrooms, you might see fourth grade students engaged in a small group with their teacher reviewing skills and concepts. Other students may be independently working on assignments they need to complete. Sometimes students might be working in centers or on menu or choice boards. And at other times, students might be taking part in enrichment groups. This time is always fluid and based on what the students need.
My name is Daniela Frank, and I am a student in Mrs. Rochelle's class. Wind blocks are great for students. Some days follow the same pattern, so we know there will be extra time to finish an assignment or continue to work on a creative writing piece. Other days, we might be able to participate in a book club or solve a more complicated math problem. I appreciate the wind blocks when there's extra time to finish a project, and when I get to read one more chapter in a great book.
My name is Alicia Song, and I am in Mr. Lewis's class. On May first, the gym will be filled with science projects researched and presented by fourth and fifth groups. I'm looking forward to this night because I will be presenting my project on How Things Clap.
My name is Naylin Sorin, and I am in Mr. Lewis's class. I am also participating this year with a partner. Our project is jellyfish and shark habitats. The same night as the science fair is the art show. Miss Anderson transforms the entry hallway into an art museum, where she makes sure at least one piece of art from every student is proudly displayed. This event is always a highlight of the evening.
I'm Jack Regeri, and I'm in Mr. Stewart's class. Our school committee has become more diverse. Did you know that over twenty-five different languages are represented at TES? To celebrate our diversity, on May seventh, the TES cafeteria will be filled with Tingsboro families from other countries sharing fun facts and food from their home countries. The celebration of us is always a fun time. On May thirtieth, TES will host a third-grade wax museum. Third graders choose a famous person and research their life and accomplishments. At the museum, they dress up and give a short presentation as if they were the president in the wax museum.
June is all about us, fifth graders. Not really, but we like to think it is. June fourth is our field day, and June sixth is when the graduating senior class walks the halls of TES one last time in their graduation gown. The end of the year family barbecue is scheduled for June twelfth.
We have tired of the fifth grade fun week, and now we get to experience it. Each day of that week, something special is thrown, like popcorn and a movie, science exploration day, and ice creams sponsored by the Tingsboro Police Department and the Gold Ones, which organizes outdoor games.
Our principals and teachers have organized activities to help us feel more comfortable entering middle school next year. The fifth-grade team is preparing to show us how the middle school curriculum is different from ours. They will start to incorporate flexible grouping and introduce us to the traditional grading system. They will also start slowly providing homework and assigned projects that will be completed at home. In June, we will take a bus to the middle school and have the opportunity to meet with some of the teachers we will have next year. Mrs. Slattery and Mr. Holgate will bring a group of middle schoolers to TES for a question-and-answer session. I am looking forward for that.
One of the last events planned for the end of the school year is the fifth-grade moving on ceremony on June eleventh. Finally, on the last day of school, we will do one final walk through the halls of TES before we enter for summer vacation and future adventures at the middle school.
Dr. Flanagan, Mr. Woodlock, Mr. Messina, and student representative Evan Cody, and dedicated school committee members. Thank you for having us tonight. We hope you can attend some of our upcoming events.
That was a great presentation. Thank you, guys, for that. I am going to open it up to the school committee members to see what kind of questions they have. So be prepared.
Well, you guys know I'm going to be at all of your events, or there will be a classmate of yours who'll be very, very, very upset with me. I am very proud of you, guys, and this is, whoo, no, I'm not going to go yet. I'm going to take a minute. This is a special fifth-grade class because it's the last one that I have a kid in the elementary school, so, great job, guys. What's your favorite memory of the last six, seven, eight years that you've been at TES? It's library. Just say it's when I check.
Maybe coming to the school. And meeting new friends and learning new things.
Probably Field Day.
It's a good one.
I like having, being able to sit with all my friends at lunch. That's really fun.
And recess.
You good?
I'm good.
I thought that video was amazing. Great job. So she stole my first question, so I'll move on to my second one. What are you most excited about at the middle school for next year? What have you heard and what are you really looking forward to?
Having multiple classes. The science lab.
Nothing else?
How about the brand-new building?
Oh, yeah. That was the right answer.
We're excited about that, too.
We are.
No, I usually take up all the time, so I'm trying to be better this year.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say I really enjoyed the video that you made. It was unique and creative. Like you said, no one else has ever done that before, and we really liked that. That was great. Also, we love when you guys come to visit. It makes our meetings a lot more fun. And we love to hear your perspective, because you guys are actually in the classrooms, and we don't get to be in the classroom, so thank you for coming in and sharing.
Yeah, to echo that, thank you so much. Great job, guys. You know, it's been so long since I've been in your building, my sons, June, high school here this year. And I really miss coming over to the elementary school and seeing and feeling all the energy here from all the wonderful students. You guys really bring that building and make it alive. Bringing it here to us today just helps remind me of how much I miss being in that building.
I just want to thank you for your unique approach on the video. That was really cool. It was cool to see you on screen and then see you in person and see how you presented differently in both. You did amazing. Thank you so much for that. I also really enjoyed hearing from you about your specialists. I think the specialists are a lot of fun, and they get to bring a different perspective, so thanks for sharing about that.
I just want to thank you. You guys did a great presentation. I loved the video. Very well done. And have a great rest of the year, and look forward to the middle school next year. Excellent, thank you. Again, I will say it, I say it every time you guys present to us, but there's a lot of adults who couldn't do what you kids just did. So it takes a lot of guts to sit there and with millions of people watching out on you, as we always say. Yeah, like five. And most of them are related to us. But the video was great. Again, that was really cool. It's the first time we've had that in my twelve years here. So thank you. Thank you to Ms. Kavanaugh and your staff for preparing these guys and helping putting that together.
I just have one question for them. I think it was great, I was trying to keep notes on all the activities going on with special subjects. It's a mess, but there's so much information here, which is great. I love the fact that we're talking about transitions. I love the fact that we're talking about transitions and we're talking about flexible grouping and homework and getting ready for next year. How is that going, how do you feel about that? Does it feel different when we start to see things in fifth grade a little bit different as we get ready for next year? Anyway. What's that, I didn't hear what you said? You're excited for homework?
This tracks, Dr. Flanagan, this tracks from that one.
Yeah?
Yeah, I feel like it like helped us adjust a lot to the next year in middle school.
Well I think it's interesting that you're coming over to see the old middle school, which you actually won't have to go into thankfully. But you're going to get a sense of the teachers and the community and the culture and the vibe of the school, so that's important to do. So I'm looking forward to that and I'm glad that we are really focusing on that transition so that it really is as easy as possible. And I guess the good news for you is when you come back in August, the school's going to be brand new for everyone, not just you. Seventh graders aren't going to know where to go, eighth graders aren't going to know where to go, so you're all on even playing field, so that'll be good. So, and we'll take care of you, we'll make sure you know where you're going. So, great job, phenomenal job, it was like a newscast, brought live and in person and kind of to the field for the story. You did a great job, so thank you so much.
Yes, so what we'll do at this time is we'll take a five-minute recess. And then we'll get some pictures and stuff and then we'll resume our regular scheduled meeting.
Well, shouldn't have go to recess.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries.
You all stay right there.
Alright, welcome back to our regular scheduled meeting. Again, we'd like to thank the children and the families from the elementary school for coming out and presenting. And now we'll get back to item number seven, subcommittees, which we actually canceled this evening's subcommittee meeting, so we don't have any at this time. We'll go to agenda item number eight, unfinished business, MSBA update.
Thank you Mr. Chair, we'll jump into the slide deck. School building committee next Wednesday night and then at the end of the month the high school will be coming back with a presentation. And then we'll see the middle school at one of the meetings, actually the only meeting in May, May thirteenth, so that's when TMS will be coming. So that's what we have coming down the pike, go to the next slide. MSBA update, so as you can, as you can see, you can't see, that the flexible space flooring has begun, the work is going on in there. I don't have pictures of that to show just yet, but I'll get that for the next school committee meeting. But it's really right now, it's about dotting i's and crossing t's and they're buttoning a lot of things up, which is exciting to see. Site work mobilization, some of you may have seen the fence along the front when you entered the school, it was a mess for a long time, they've since cleaned that up. Maroys is back on site, they're looking, the weather hasn't really worked out for them, but they're looking at beginning the seat walls in the courtyard and really doing some of that interior landscaping, not landscaping, but really the stonework that goes there as well. The bus canopy, they have the trim on, they have the top layer on and the gutters on, they'll be working on that throughout this week. Carpet install in the media area, wall graphics, wall graphics are being installed, I have a picture of that that I'll show you momentarily. But the big thing which we learned last weekend at Maroys meeting was about the punch progression. And that was really reassuring for us. So essentially, any room, if you've been through the school recently, you know that both upstairs hallway wings are pretty much done. Once Fontaine believes the room is done, J CJ, our architect, will go in with left field, our representatives, and they will go through the entire room, every single room, and they'll come up with a punch list for that room. They then contact Fontaine. Fontaine will then go back in, go through the punch list, and call J CJ back in for final approval. Once it hits final approval, then at that point the room will be determined ready for F, F and E, furniture, fixtures and equipment. So that process is ongoing right now, what they use is really a floor plan of the entire school and they color code it. So, green, green is J CJ first went in, then it goes to orange meaning it's back in Fontaine's course. Then it goes back to green with a check mark, meaning it's ready for F, F and E. So we are getting progress updates in our weekly meeting about the amount of detail and work that's being done to really finalize those rooms. Once the rooms are finished, they're locked off and sealed and no one goes in until furniture comes. So it's really a detailed thorough process and we're actually just started monitoring that at our last Thursday meeting. So we'll see where we are this Thursday, so, exciting to see where that goes. So just a couple of pictures for you, I thought this is a very good shot of the courtyard for lack of a better term for this area. You can see the mound, the hill next to the road, that'll be a great place for students to lounge. You can see kind of the walkway and pathway throughout and you can see, you know that the half seating walls in outdoor classrooms will happen in the classroom neighborhoods on the first level of each floor. Kitchen, kitchen equipment is in, kitchen equipment is all over the place, they're installing it as we go. It is jam-packed with kitchen equipment right now, so exciting to see the survey in line. That's actually looking out to the cafeteria and the students will enter one door, exit the other one. Just, we've, I don't think we've seen the bathroom partitions in yet, just another sign that we are closer to finalization. And the wood look soffit that is existing in the cafeteria, which again will probably be the last thing that's done, is really coming along and looking great, they haven't finished the bottom section, obviously you can see in the picture. And then this is just a shot from the classroom neighborhood area, you can see the water station, the airport-style bathroom on the right. And to the right, the wall looks bluish-black in this picture, I apologize, but that's a temporary wall graphic that they put up. So essentially, anything that goes in that school, J CJ has to come in and approve the install of it. So, the installers put this up and J CJ had to say this is exactly how we want it installed. They sign off on it, they pull that one down and then they put up the real final wall graphic that's going to go there. So it's all coming along and that's where the wall graphic will be kind of in that classroom neighborhood area. So those are the pictures I have, I don't think I have any more. And that's where we are at the MSBA project at this point. Things are moving right along.
Excellent, thank you. Teaching and learning, Mr. Woodlock.
Thank you, so I wanted to share with you this evening just some of what's happening in terms of transitions. Transitions is one of our biggest ticket items in our SDI this year. And it's great to see like, you know, we have these kind of overarching themes and goals and to see things start taking place even at the classroom level. Usually we think that's all directed by administrators and things, but it's actually happening at the classroom level. So, introduction to concept of literature circles for fifth grade. This is, literature circles is something that our lead coach Katie Leahy's been working with specifically sixth grade this year to introduce the concept of literacy circles, which basically is providing students opportunity for more choice in what they read. We will still do whole class novels, but we're trying to cut that back a little bit and allow students to choose from, you know, a small amount of novels so that they have some autonomy over what they're reading. Hopefully, they're going to enjoy reading a little bit more. I'm sure we've all been part of our school experience where we were given a book and said this is what we're reading and we just didn't like it, right? So we can't say that, it's never going to happen, but the more choices students have, the more likely they're going to fall in love with a good book and be lifelong readers. So, this is a much more student-driven process, it's a lot of work up front for the teachers. Mrs. Connolly is working directly with Mrs. Leahy and a special educator in that class is a new teacher, Mr. Face, and they are doing a great job with this. So, when Mrs. Leahy told the fifth grade about what was happening in sixth grade, they said we'd love to do something like that. So, the fifth grade team, as you can see listed in the bottom right, Assistant Principal Souza, Mr. Lewis, Ms. Rochello, Ms. Homestead, and Ms. Mauren Keem and observed a sixth grade literature circle to see what it looks like. And then they met after and debriefed with the sixth grade classroom team and talked about it for about an hour. And they're going to pilot it in fifth grade as part of this, just what the kids were talking about and what Dr. Flanagan referenced, is that transition to get them ready for like, this is how things are going to work at the middle school when you get there. And this was really driven by the fifth grade teachers. And Mrs. Leahy who introduced the concept to them, they said we want to be a part of that. And so this is not only a win for transitions, but this is a win for inclusive practice instruction. It's a win for student choice, student-centered education. So, and this had nothing to do with me other than, you know, supporting Mrs. Leahy and what she's doing. She really introduced it and the teachers ran with it. So I just think that's really a great win for our school district and says a lot about our teachers and what they want to do for our students, so. Yeah, so if anyone has any questions about any of that, I'm happy to answer, best as I can.
Just a comment, I love this, like I really love hearing that these fifth grade teachers are so invested in like bringing the latest and greatest to our students, in ensuring the transitions are smooth, in working with these sixth grade teachers. Like this is what we need, this is wonderful.
Yeah, no, this is what makes me happy about my job, you know, when we see teachers say like, that might actually be better than what we're doing. Or it could be something in addition to what we're doing, I mean that says a lot about great teachers. When they're happy to say like, let's try something new, this might be great. So often, you know, in part of the work that we do sometimes, we see teachers who are just kind of stuck in a rut. And I was saying that's, you know, representative of our district, but in a lot of districts teachers just don't want to change and they're afraid to change because this is what they know. But our kids are changing. And so if we want to, you know, meet the needs of our students, we also have to change and we have to evolve. So, it says a lot about the teachers of Tinsborough and it's pretty awesome.
My, one more comment, just in the positive direction, my kids are straddling this, right? So I've got one kid who has Ms. Connolly and Mr. Face and is actively in the middle of these literature circles right now. And then like, the fifth grader is hearing about it at home and I've noticed, I don't know if it's just because of how she's wired or if they're doing something different in fifth grade or she's like taking a cue from her older brother and seeing what he's doing. Her, what they call one-pagers in fifth grade, the book that she's reading, there's just so many post-it notes. And so how kids are reading and the books they're choosing is definitely way different than it was five, ten, twenty, thirty years ago. So this is amazing and I'm really excited to hear that it's.
What you're referring to speaks a lot to the keys to literacy training that they've had about annotating texts. So, you know, and it's about executive functioning skills too, like we have to answer questions, we have to create a product. What's going to help us as we read and what processes can we use as we read that are going to help us, you know, formulate what we're going to do later? So it's not like starting from scratch, you know, so a lot of great strategies that the teachers are employing, it's pretty awesome. And I should say I meant to bring it up, but when I talked to Mrs. Leahy, she said like, students 100% engaged during this process. And like, that seems like, that's a pretty high number, right? And when I talked to Mrs. Souza, she said the exact same thing. So, we're doing something right there, we just want to make sure that we hold on to it and expand it.
I do have a question, but it's kind of combined between the MSBA update and the transition to the middle school. Do, are we going to do any walkthroughs of the new middle school with the three groups as they, so they don't show up on day one and have no clue?
So, we are going to, so right now Jackie Richardson is doing a video, presentation walkthrough. I had a conversation with Fontaine and really kids under sixteen for insurance purposes aren't allowed really to kind of go through, do tours, mass tours at this point. We take occupancy of the building in May, so we'll have to discuss what August looks like, so we have to have some event in August to welcome the kids back, so they will be able to get in there before the first day of school. But in terms of doing it right now as part of transition, we can't do yet because we have occupancy of the school until May.
Just a thought. That's it, Mr. Woodlock?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Policy second reads. So we had two policies, the Tinsborough Public School flag policy and the upper entrance age, school admissions policies.
Mr. Chair, my knowledge we had no feedback, is that correct Chairman?
I do not have any comments for many parents or community members. So I'll seek a motion to approve them as second reads.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
And so now the committee knows these are now officially adopted policies, I'll reach out to MASC and get them included in our policy manual.
Could you just elaborate on getting them included in our policy manual for the public?
Sure, yes, yeah, so probably five years ago, four or five years ago, we changed our entire policy manual. We went through a rigorous one-year really compare and contrast our local policies with an officially standardized state adopted policy book. We moved to this model, our policies are all vetted, up-to-date and current and they're on the MASC.org website as well as our webpage as well. But our policies are kind of the standard across the Commonwealth and, you know, it provides opportunities and sets up coverage for us in that when we had just local policies developed by everyone in this room, if a law had changed or mass general law or Title IX or sexual harassment or anything had changed, it wasn't coming upon us to keep our eye up on the law and be aware of that legislation. Now, as part of MASSS, that is picked up automatically, so our policies are current and we get notifications and remind us anytime we need to amend our policy book, so is that what you wanted? Yes, okay, yeah, so we moved to a standardized policy, much like a lot of districts in the Commonwealth.
Alright, thank you, and also a thank you to the policy subcommittee for the work that you guys put in to make those policies happen, thank you. Nine B, district-wide end-of-year activities.
Mr. Chair, I just pulled out some of the more well-intended events, I will not say that these are the be-all and-all. As we clearly heard from the students tonight, we have a lot of going on, science fair, wax museum, some of those didn't make this. But these are just dates to get in your calendar now and get out in the community now, so that, you know, you're more than welcome, you're all invited to any and all of these events. But it is a special time of year, once we hit May and we start to celebrate our seniors and celebrate our kids as we start to think about transitions and moving on to the next part of their academic career. So, just wanted to get these in front of you tonight.
I'm tired to believe we're already talking about this.
I know, it is, it is.
All right, we'll move on to finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for signing of bills tonight. There were 13 bill warrants presented to the committee, I do have them all back approved. As always, in your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. No signing of payroll tonight, we will do catch-up at your next meeting. And also in your drive tonight is the third-quarter package from Valley Collaborative on their operations. A lot of numbers in this package, if you haven't looked at it yet, but it includes their third-quarter information as well as next year's budget information. But more importantly is their spring newsletter and I really, I think that's a great read to see all the great work that they're doing both, you know, for our kids and other kids in Tingsborough as well as on their other campuses, so it's a good read. And that's it.
Thank you. School committee discussion. Good evening.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the elementary school students as well as the parents, it was a great presentation, terrific video. Also loved the whole concept of the literature circles. It's nice to see the teachers being innovative, creative with our students and I think that's terrific to see. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Ms. Zock for over 15 years of service, she's impacted my family personally. We will really miss Ms. Zock in this district, she's a great lady and wishing her all the best in retirement.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
I just wanted to update the committee and the superintendent that the fifth graders, I sort of stopped by their quick dinner in the cafeteria and Gavin told me that he is ready to take over my job, so. So I'm gonna make him my protege and after school tomorrow, he's gonna start working towards being my replacement, so thanks Gavin.
That's funny, this means you have another 15 years or something.
That's right. That's it, thank you.
You know, also I'd like to thank the kids again, they did a wonderful job as they always do. The, you know, glad I was a little bit more prepared for this, Ms. Zock. What a wonderful, wonderful person, paraprofessional, working with the kids for so many years. And you're right, she's gonna be an extremely big loss for this district. She worked for a couple of years with my son and, who does have autism. And as, you know, it's well-known, sometimes, you know, many autistic children become enamored and just throw them in, throw themselves into a couple of interests. The thing that he had become most interested in was elevators at the time, he was scared to death of them, but he loved learning about them. Mrs. Zock not only helped him get over that fear, also helped develop a working knowledge for him on how elevators work. She put together this big board that had moving pieces, elevator doors that opened, and gears and pulleys up on top of it just so he better understood how they worked. And so, you know, I'm so thankful for all of the years of work that she dedicated herself to this district. She is going to be missed. I wasn't prepared the last time, but when Michelle Vale announced that she was going to be retiring at the end of this year as well, that's two people that worked very closely with my son. I know many ti, several times I have mentioned the work of the paraprofessionals in this district. And I had a story that I told pretty much every time about the child who came in, who was a preschooler, it was non-verbal. And a couple of years later, when I saw him again, he was speaking so much and I always attributed it to the work of our paraprofessionals here. Cheryl was one of, was one of the paraprofessionals that worked with him very closely. And I know the family, you know, speaking with them back then, that they attributed just all the work that she and one of the other parents had done with him and just was so thankful for their work. But that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
I just real quickly wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Kavanaugh and the elementary school students for coming in. And I thought it was great that they used a video because as parents and adults, we don't often get to see that perspective of being in the classroom and exactly what they're doing day-to-day and what they're working on. And that was a great way to give everybody a sneak peek. It's great when they come in to speak and I love seeing them, but using that video just took it the next step further for me, so I thought that was wonderful.
Yeah, I agree, I think the balance of the in-person notes and the video was really unique and first time we've seen that, so I thought that was awesome. So thank you to those guys. I also wanna wish the eighth graders good luck on their DC trip. It's a super busy schedule, but it's fun and, you know, some of them will get scheduled the first night, but it goes away and you'll have a good time and best of luck.
Another way to go on to the, to the kids tonight for coming and doing their presentation, larger shout-out to the TES community at large for over 1,000 items in the food drive. I know my daughter was at my backside to make sure that food got into that school for the food drive and I'm sure it was the push of the students to the parents, which just shows the generosity of the community that we're teaching our kids. So way to go to the TES community for that. And as far as the presentation goes tonight, I wanna also just give a shout-out to Jocelyn Mitchell at TES who does all the coaching for these presentations for them, she is amazing, the kids love her. I know my daughter's been doing the Tiger Talk News all this week and every time the kids are interacting with her, it's just great to see. So thanks to Mrs. Mitchell for working with the kids every time they have these presentations and videos to do.
All right, just quick kudos to the kids, they're phenomenal. I do want to thank Senator Kerry and, Senator Kennedy and Representative Gary last night for their time at the tri board meeting. For those who don't know, we had the opportunity to present last night to our local legislators about concerns that we have. I appreciate their advocacy around chapter 70 and additional funding for school. And I would like, you know, we did bring it to their attention, the need for additional funding and really parameters around special education costs and the rising uncontrollable cost of special education. So thank you to Senator Kennedy, Representative Gary for their time last night.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the elementary school students for coming in, thank their parents for bringing them and taking the time out of their busy days. Ms. Kavanaugh and her staff for preparing them and why we are here, volunteering every two weeks. So thank you to them, thank you to Mr. Mullin for bringing up the work that our paraprofessionals do. They don't always get the credit that they deserve, so those types of stories, people don't hear about every day. So it's nice to recognize them and thank them for everything they do for, in support of our teachers, for our students, so thank you for that. We do have a need for executive session this evening, so I will read the executive session. To discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, and mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. We will return from executive session only to adjoint the regular session meeting. I am seeking a motion to enter into executive session. This will require a roll call vote.
I move to enter executive session.
Second. In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you and have a good night.